When I start the meeting, please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings in all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Chao.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Gitchia.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yum.
Here.
It's eleven present.
Do we have any memorials? Moment of silence tonight. Hearing none, we now start the meeting with the mayor's business. Two point one, communication remote Zoom participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Noon, second by Counselor Robinson. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. I now would like to, we have a lot of exciting events this weekend. I would like to ask the committee that will be putting together the Lunar New Year to make a quick presentation, real quick. Please approach the podium, introduce yourself, and give us a brief description on the event this weekend.
Hi, my name is Cam. We represent Lowell Lounge. This is my partner, Peter. And with the kindness of the council and the mayor, we are working together to bring you a first year of Lunar New Year to the city of Lowell, where we will host Lunar New Year here at City Hall, starting with the traditional Dragon Dance by five elements of Tai Chi. After that will be martial art demonstration, and hopefully we're able to do the Good Luck Firecracker. We are working on it with At Last Power Technician. With the kind-hearted of Mayor Chow, we will go visit every businesses that is participating in this and wish them a good luck with a red Good Luck money envelope. After that, we will be at Lowell Lounge. There will be light food, light beverages for everybody to attend in this event.
Thank you. Peter, do you have anything else, Peter, there? I just want to say thank you to both of you, and so to the public note, this is the first Dragon Dance festival in our city. We normally have to travel to other cities to celebrate the Lunar New Year. And this festival is initiated by a group of small business owners in downtown area and that connects all the other businesses as well to participate. And this event is open to the public. It's a family-friendly event, and it's really, it's going to be a great celebration, it's going to bring good luck to all the businesses, to all the residents of Lowell. And I know that even the counselors were asking for good luck as well. Counselor Scott was requesting for good luck, and you shall have it, as was all the counselors here today. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any comments from the counselors? Hearing none, on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. That motion is carry. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to ask for a suspension of the rule. We have one more exciting event starting this Sunday as well, and it's really, not every day you have a celebrity in a house, in a chamber. So we have a very famous actress and the director from MRT, and the actress's father, Mr. Chinari Ung, is also here with us. Welcome to Lowell, and I would like them to speak tonight, second by Counselor Noon. Ms. Courtney Sales.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Chow, so much. Thank you to the council. My name is Courtney Sale, and I have the great pleasure and honor to serve as the Nancy Eldonahue Art Executive Artistic Director at Merrimack Repertory Theater. As you all know, for 44 years, MRT has been a cultural and economic driver to Lowell. We love our position in the community. That way, we take it with great responsibility. Coming out of the pandemic, we ask ourselves a lot of questions about how do we program works and stories that are relevant to our community? And how do we really scaffold and build connection as we bring those pieces to production? I'm so delighted to introduce you to an amazing actor, writer, and just all-around incredible theater artist, Kalion Ng, who is bringing to us her piece Letters From Home, which details a lot of her father, Chinari Ng's story, as well as her own, and Chinari is with us as well. And I also just want to acknowledge our amazing director, Marina McClure, who's back there in the corner. But I'm going to pass it to, I'm going to pass it to Kalion.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kalion Ng, and I am so thrilled to be in Lowell and see you all. I'm so excited to share Letters From Home. It's had quite a journey, and to arrive here in Lowell and perform it for you is tremendous, and it means so much to me. I feel so welcome here, and I'm so excited to share this very personal story about my family. And so I hope you will come, and thank you so much for having us speak today. I really appreciate it.
Dad, would you like to come up?
Thank you very much. I'm honored to be here. I just want to give a very brief background. A while back, when the refugee was strangled at the border, Cambodian Thailand, I received a lot of notes and all of that from the family members. And to make a long story short, those were hundreds of letters. And I somehow decided to bury it and put it in a box. And forty years later, it happened that my daughter picked it up and opened the box and made it into a story. Please join us this weekend. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is that it? Okay. Well, I'm excited and I'm moved by the play that you bring to Lowell, and I thank MRT and the actor, who is a Shakespearean actor as well, bring, you know, like your talent. And basically, this is living history, your father, your family, and just like many residents here in Lowell and the Cambodian diaspora around the world, it's really great to see the living history onstage. So thank you all for being here, and I look forward to seeing the show. Counselor Yum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kalion. Thank you for being here. A few months ago, we have an opportunity to meet you at the kickoff at the auditorium along with the mayor, and you showed us a little bit of Letters From Home, and you told us a story of, you know, how you become putting the play together, the letter that your dad was talking about hiding away, and you want to bring it out. I think Lowell is the perfect location, the second largest, people say second-largest Cambodian population in America, but to me, Lowell is the largest Cambodian population, because I used to be in Long Beach too, so Lowell is a bigger one. So Lowell biggest. So welcome to Lowell, and we look forward to the show. Okuncharan.
Thank you. The motion adopted. Motion is passed. Thank you for being here. Counselor Robinson.
Can I get a suspension of the rules, please?
Motion by Counselor Robinson to suspend the rules, second by Counselor Scott. Counselor Robinson.
So in regards to recent events that occurred in the city, I'm sure all of us have been having conversations with members of the community. And I would like to put a motion on the floor. Can we please have the administration with the director of homeless and unhoused services, as well as the health department, provide the council with, pretty much we're looking for a thorough policy regarding encampment cleanouts, so we can start this conversation. So I'd appreciate if the administration, I know we've had one in the past, this isn't something that's happened, brand new, but I believe, let me ask first, the existing policy, it can be updated and tweaked, correct? Just to make sure we're paying attention to what worked, what didn't work recently, correct?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council, yes, Counselor, it can be.
Okay. And so could I please request, the motion on the floor would be request a draft policy moving forward for any encampment cleanouts that the city is going to authorize, and what that looks like, being mindful of some of the concerns that we've heard over the past week, and it'd be greatly appreciated.
Motion by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Gitchia. Did you want to second that, or do you want to have a comment? Second by Counselor Gitchia. Any comments or questions by any of the counselors? Counselor Gitchia.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Do we currently, I think I just read in my email this afternoon that we do have a current policy on it. So through you to the manager or to the maker of the motion, are we updating that policy? And is there anything in the policy that you see currently that would need immediate changes?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselor, there are, first and foremost, in speaking with our team that has been putting this together, that we're really looking at the camp cleanup as a living, breathing document. So if people have ideas, which I know Ms. Fitzpatrick is ready, willing, and able, Ms. Golden, very willing, ready, willing, and able, to take any and all suggestions, whether they be additional signage in multiple languages, we talked about, you know, trying to get the co-op team to bridge that language barrier. So I really want to think of this, Counselor, as we've put our best foot forward, and there's always somebody that is going to have a different idea, and we welcome those ideas between now and forever, actually, quite frankly, and I think that our team is doing a good job at it. But I really want to make sure that the best practices could come in four weeks from now, and we'll change it at that time if that's the will of the body.
I do support the motion, because I think it should be a living, breathing document and based off of the way things are being done. If there's a better way, obviously, we should be, obviously, listening to it. So I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also support the motion about the protocol or policy, and especially that the policy is clearly posted online, so people know what our expectations are. I think we're all trying to do what is best in the city. So if we can make changes that, you know, people suggest, that's wonderful. But I do, again, I'd like to see it posted, all of our policies, so that we just can easily direct people, that we do give plenty of notice. I think we give far more than other cities and towns require. In this case, we gave notice multiple times that I'm aware of. So I just want to make sure, like I said, that we can clearly point to a document. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Exactly, Counselor, we are making sure that, you know, the signage would be there, and it was some really great ideas coming in from a whole host of folks. I know that we all see Civic Plus, and I know that the emails have been coming in. I've been talking to people over this weekend. I know each and every counselor here has contacted me to have this discussion about how we can do this better. Once again, I do think our co-op team and our HHS group and our homeless coordinator, they have been working extremely hard to make sure that, you know, people feel as though they know the protocol. For us to put this, to continue to change it when we need to, and make sure that the best practices are happening here in the city of Lowell, I can only say that, I know that the two folks I mentioned earlier are eager to hear anyone's thoughts and concerns about what we can do better. You know, we are looking at things right now. I've had the opportunity to speak to public and private developers about trying to expand wraparound services, which we'd love to get into at a deeper, you know, deeper later on. I truly believe that the 36 partners that we have throughout the city of Lowell, that HHS has really kind of brought back to life over the past, I'm going to, I'm looking for a little help over the past four months, I would say, maybe five, with the group of folks. And maybe Ms. Fitzpatrick can let us know the amount of meetings, the amount of time we're spending on this, to make sure that people are feeling, we're trying to do this the right way. We have success stories that have already happened. People that were once living here, went through LTLC, and we just left a meeting with LTLC, now they're in a hotel, now they have a Section 8 certificate. We have success stories, and it's really a credit to the people that are working and to this council. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd love to have Ms. Fitzpatrick say a few words, if that's okay with the council.
Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, and the council. Yes, as the manager has just stated, there is a lot of work being done behind the scenes. There are many, many different meetings that take place. We're having a meeting on Friday that is going to focus completely on outreach and look for all the gaps that are in the process, because there are gaps. And it's, you know, a process, as any process, when things change around it, the process needs to change too. So we have that meeting. We certainly have many, many partners in the city. I'll be meeting with 30 or 40 of them tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the Lowell Provider Meeting. I met with about, maybe 10 of them, this afternoon at the Lowell Connector Meeting, where we discuss all the names on our by-name list, and these are all the people who are either unsheltered or are sheltered in a shelter, not in a home housing situation. And we go through that list, and we talk about what we can do to help people. The Co-It Meeting is another meeting that we have. That's where we talk about encampments. And we meet for that twice a month, and we keep track, you know, the co-op team is excellent at keeping track of the number of people who are living outdoors, and like I had said the last time I spoke here, knows most of them by name. And, you know, we encourage people to come indoors, always, but we can't force people to come indoors either. We can offer services, though, even if you're living outdoors, you can still participate in the services that are offered, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr.
But I just add that, yes, I would welcome any suggestions from the counselors concerning updating the protocol. I'm happy to hear from all of you.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Robinson, for asking for suspension of rule and bringing this up, and I am pleased to hear Ms. Patrick, Ms. Fitzpatrick indicated that she would be welcome for the updated of our encampment liaison protocol, as Counselor Robinson suggests. I have, and I know every counselor would have it, because I know the managers have sent to all of us an email, in a link to Boston One. I would suggest that the Boston One is much clearer and concise, and really, some of those work, as the manager indicated, that the city have done it with its partner. So it's a matter of just having a clear and concise policy. And of course, this is always change. If need be, then do so, but a clear and concise policy and have it on our website so that everyone can, resident and/or unhoused population who need or want to refer to this policy can have access to. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity for counselors to contribute ideas or feedback to the protocol. I think what's most important, though, and if you look through the various protocols that, you know, the council has been and received of, and, you know, were dated from prior to the start of this year, I think the most important thing is that in practice, you know, out on the ground, that they're followed, you know, that they're clearly communicated to everyone involved through the process, everyone has a common understanding. I think, you know, the public posting of the protocols is important, but I think most important, you know, we're not practitioners, you know, in this field as counselors, you know, we do research, we look at what has been done in other localities that are dealing with the same thing, and I think we can all collectively come up with, you know, some good ideas and maybe contribute some best practices, but I just think, pardon me, what's important is that there's a consistent understanding from everyone involved, from, you know, from the city, from partner organizations, and, you know, what those proper protocols are, and just that they're clearly communicated to each and everyone involved, because you do look at it, and, you know, the protocol is thorough. I know it'll change as we go on, but, you know, if this is followed to a T, then we're doing things compassionately, respectfully, with the proper notices and outreach of services. So just want to ensure that going forward, everyone is on the same page and, you know, carrying out the things with the same direction. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I think my colleagues that commented on this, I think the administration, again, I think this is a complex, multifaceted issue that's before us. I think right now, this motion is specifically in regards to procedure and policy when it's deemed we're going to be doing the cleaning of an encampment. As far as, and I've had multiple conversations, as far as the larger picture, the whys, and what's the root causes, and what are some of the treatments and suggestions, I mean, when we come back with this policy, feel free to add any, you know, what are we currently doing to try to, you know, what are we doing to treat today? What are we looking to do to treat tomorrow? And ultimately, what would be the outcome that you think the city of Lowell would benefit from to start to really address and work towards a positive, as positive as can be in a situation like this? This isn't an issue that's going to be resolved today, tomorrow, or next year without especially some really good partnerships. And I think everyone's well aware, it's not just a Lowell issue. This is something that it's going to require resources and funding from all different tiers. So I appreciate the hard work that our whole team with the administration is doing, and let's start with the encampment cleanup policy and procedure, and really, you know, we've gotten plenty of feedback, so I appreciate any help we can get. Thank you.
Any Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. I just threw you to the manager. When we do take a look at the policy, I'm sure on the other side, too, we have policy for cleanup, right? Because we want to make sure that who's ever going in there, if it's state or city workers or health, you know, we want to make sure everybody is safe in this whole entire process, and make sure that the cleanup policies are just as clear as what we do with the other procedures, because it's not a pleasant thing to clean up these sites, and we want to make sure everyone's safe. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. That is correct. I know that HHS has been working closely with their team over there, and they deal with that on a fairly regular basis. I'll ask Ms. Golden just to look at that, to make sure the policies that we do have under, you know, current cleanup are safe for everyone. So we'll take a look at that as well.
Any other comments or questions on Counselor Robinson's motion? Hearing none, on the favors, I, opposed, say no, eyes have it, motion is carry. We now approaching almost seven, we'll go to Section Three, the city clerk.
The mayor, while we're under suspension of the rules, could I just add one thing?
Is it a discussion on a different topic?
It's a discussion on a different topic, but it should be.
Do you think we have enough time before seven, or you want to do after public hearing?
I can wait till after the public.
Yeah, go ahead, one more minute. I think I want to give you more time. Okay. Section Three, City Clerk, three point one, minute, City Council, regular meeting, January 10th, for acceptance. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Janess. On favors, I, oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. We now we're approaching seven o'clock. We'll go to the general public hearings, four point one, the ordinance, crew aid, position, opera, project, construction manager. This section is now open to all those in favor. Open to all those in favor. Departmental Speaker to. Departmental Speaker to in favor. Hearing none. That portion is now closed. This section now is open to all those who oppose. Open to all those who oppose. I hear no one want to speak. This section is now closed. Any comments or questions by any of the councilors? Councilor Gishia?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager. Mr. Manager, of the $75.9 million in ARPA funding, how much would be in construction that this project manager would oversee, roughly?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Alone, it's going to be $9 million just in the neighborhoods. On top of the $9 million, there'll be other construction projects that we haven't yet identified. So on a minimum, this person would be responsible for better than $9 million in construction projects.
Okay, so being in this type of industry, when you look at $9 million over a four-year period in the cost of absorbing, you can get a contractor to do it for far less. You can go outside to an engineering company to do it far less than what it's going to cost us here. And when we look at these, the job descriptions, we had one back in May for the facilities. It says Facilities Infrastructure Project Manager, which was, is paid less than what this one was. And this job's just a cut and paste from that, just put an ARPA stuff in it. And I just think that when we start looking at these projects, we got $2 million, roughly between $1.7 and $2 million in salaries between four positions, between salaries and benefits. I just think that we're going down a hole that we're paying more to oversee things than we're getting for services for out-of-the-ARPA money. I'd like to make a motion that we, I'd like to make a motion that we look at what other communities similar to us in the amount of money are doing for the hiring process under ARPA monies. I think it's fair to say, okay, let's see. Because four positions over a four-year period, almost $2 million is going to be spent in those funds that could go to other projects, such as adding the three more fire trucks and stuff like that, that we could do for the 2010s and get rid of them would be more beneficial. But I just don't see for $9 million why we need someone to oversee it at this one. We have plenty of employees in DPD, and DPD staff's amazing at it. So I think we have them there in between engineering. I don't think this is really a needed position, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. The concern that we have, council, right now is DPD. We have some great people over there that are taking on additional roles. I mean, currently, right now, just to think, CDBG monies that have been going through, ESG monies, as well as the capital projects alone that we have going on. That's where our concern is to try to bring in an additional set of hands to get this to completion. That's the real reason to do this, to try to beef up what we have over, what we actually need over at DPD, to assist them where all of these programs, all the programs that we're going to be putting out, there's a discussion on it later on today, later on this evening, excuse me, we really truly believe we need an extra set of hands.
And I just would say to you, I think that you should contract this piece out and have someone oversee it as a contractor. Water and wastewater do this for every single one of their projects. They contract the oversight of all of these construction projects out. So I just think it's fair that we look into that option before we start putting more people on payrolls that we're going to have to let go in four years.
Just to clarify, Councilor Gishia, your motion is to get a report, what are the communities are doing? It's not taken away from the vote? It's on the agenda tonight, is that correct?
Correct. I can vote, I'll just vote no on the vote, yes.
Separately, okay. Motion by Councilor Gishia to give a report, what are the communities are doing, second by Councilor Janess. On the favor, the eye. Oppose say no. The eyes have it. That motion is carried. Any more comments on the vote on the agenda? Councilor Scott?
No, I was just seconding it.
Okay, we're seconding. I thought you had a momentary comment. Councilor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the amount of money that will be overseen by this, by the construction manager, through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, you just mentioned the $9 million in neighborhood improvements as an example of the projects that'll be overseen. And you mentioned that there are other areas that are included. I mean, as I see it, the other areas are significant in terms of investment. I mean, I'm thinking that the municipal building improvements that were included in the ARPA plan, as well as the water and wastewater infrastructure, all of the sort of combined infrastructure that is drafted in the plan. I mean, I think when you combine those, we're probably up closer to maybe $25, $30 million. So is that an accurate assessment of sort of the overall construction budget under ARPA that would be under the purview of the manager, of the construction manager position?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. That could be, that could be correct, yes. But, you know, given the fact of, over in wastewater, we are, we do have experts over there as well that are helping out. But once again, I do think DPD, with everything they have on their plate, and to add minimum nine councillor and possibly upwards of 15 to 20 or more, I do think we need the extra hands. And the people that are taking these jobs know that they, you know, will be, will be let go in three to four years.
You also, Councilor Drinkwater?
Yep.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager. This is now the fourth position, I think, we've added recently for ARPA, or third? I'm not sure. And I guess my question is just, do we anticipate adding any additional positions for the ARPA team at this point? Or is this the end of the road for the foreseeable future for this?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. At this time, no, we have three. But if, you know, we have one, kind of have a one-man band right now that is looking to hire two more folks, and obviously, this third. So we're hoping to get through with this, but I'm not sure. I would say no, councilor, but I wouldn't want to come back in due time and find out with the amount of federal regulation that we have to go through, with the fact that we have to ensure that all the monies that are spent, they're spent correctly. And then furthermore, we'd have to, we have to actually make sure that they're reimbursable. Because we're in a situation where some organizations are going to come to us. We're going to have to require that they spend the money first, and then we're going to have to reimburse them. In the matter of the city, the city will have the responsibility. This person will have the responsibility. The team, the ARPA team, will have the responsibility to ensure that this money is spent correctly. So there's an awful, there's a lot of paperwork with this.
Thank you for that. I can appreciate the complexities involved with this project and with this funding. But I'm really anxious to see this money start getting out into the community and being put to work. So I guess my concern is just, you know, kind of the drip-drip nature of adding these positions. I'd like to get them all out of the way so that we can, we can focus on getting this money to work. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the ARPA positions? Hearing none, need a motion to adopt by Councilor Mercier, second by Councilor Young. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Gishia?
No.
Councilor Janess?
Yes.
Councilor Leahy?
Yes.
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor New?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Sorry. Councilor Young?
Yes.
Teniers?
That completes the general public hearing. Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. I just saw some pictures of the, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes, motion by Councilor Gishia to suspend the rules, second by Councilor Leahy. Councilor Gishia?
Thank you, Councilor Leahy. I just saw some pictures that are kind of disturbing of the high school gym being vandalized in some of the restrooms and stuff like that. And I'm just wondering, through you to the manager, the city owns the building, but the school department actually is in the building. So there's really, in my opinion, there's no base for them to actually have much concern when these things are going on. Just but to call you, say something's been wrecked, and come fix it. My concern is it's a brand-new building, not even finished, and it's already being vandalized. And what is our communications back and forth with the school department? So you're notified when your brand-new building is? I don't even know if you were aware of this or not. So what is their responsibility, the school department, to notify the city that something's being vandalized like that in the building? And what do we do to make corrective actions so that we can hold people accountable for it? I know that when you're in a building, such as the one that I actually oversee, I oversee something that, it's our asset. So it's something that we actually have control over. But I think there's a breakdown in our system. It has been for many, many years, between the lands and buildings, the school department. And we have to get this facilities department together. These assets are way too expensive for the city to keep maintaining and trying to go over. This is a brand-new building that, the pictures are disturbing, whether it's a toilet, paper roll, or whatever's being wrecked over there. So, and I get kids will be kids, but I think that the city should be made aware of any vandalism. And we shouldn't have to see pictures of it being sent to all of us, saying, look, you know. And I know another councillor is well aware of this also. It's just hard to believe we just poured our hearts and souls to all of these meetings and everything we've done to try to give these kids the best that they can have. And I'm not saying it's Lowell kids. It could have been from an outside basketball teams' fans or something. I don't know that answer. But we poured our hearts and souls into this building, and we still want to see what the best outcome is for the families in this city. And we see these things. It's just very, very disturbing to see. So I just wonder, can we get some policy between the city and the school department so that we're notified when vandalism is done to our buildings, so that we can keep track of them and say, you know, whether they fix it, who fixes it? Once something's drilled in, it's broken off, the thing's never the same. And I'll leave you with that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Counsel, the communication that we have between the city administration and the school department is very good. I don't know if this, I happen to be there for a basketball game, just, I think it was a week and a half ago. Could have been two. Sorry about thinking about that. But we talk on a very regular basis, upwards of a couple times a week. So I don't know if this just, if this vandalism just happened yesterday, or Friday, Thursday, I'm not sure. But we can reach out to them. They're very, normally very, very good about reaching out to us and letting us know what the issues are within any of the schools. Give it heating issues or anything else, which we, knock on wood, right now, we've been doing fairly well. So, but in this matter, I can get that back to you, and I'll find out a better communication model. But normally, it's not an issue with them giving us a call and letting us know.
Any other comments? Councilor Mercier?
Yes, thank you. Since we're in the vicinity of the gym, it is my understanding, and I know that we all took a tour, and it's simply gorgeous. It's a beautiful facility. And, but I never looked in the bathrooms when I went in there. I didn't have the need to go or look. So from what I'm understanding is there's two stalls for the men, two stalls for the women. And in an effort to support women everywhere, whether you're a student or a grandmother, I would hope that there's more than two stalls for the women. I don't know if it's too late to add on to that, or make it happen. You know, if you know anything about the ratio of a men's room to a ladies' room, there's always quite more women going in there. So is there anything we can do before it's too late and everybody's gone and the school is completed? Could we just revisit that and see? Because that's what I'm hearing. There's only two stalls for the ladies' room. And I just think that that's not enough. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Yes, councilor, I have heard that as well. Currently, right now, the gym is under code. So it has enough bathrooms, which I agree with you, with the two stalls. However, when the cafeteria is completed, that's where they'll be, which is going to be connected, that is where there'll be additional bathrooms. I'm not sure if, we were talking about what the actual title would be, you know, just a larger bathrooms. So currently, right now, once again, it is code for the gymnasium. And once the cafeteria is completed, there'll be additional bathrooms there.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was my understanding during the high school process, building process, that there were several things. The MSBA designs a high school for like the average-sized student body. Obviously Lowell has a disproportionately larger-sized student body. So there were a few things that I remember they had to go after the state to get exceptions for, such as the auditorium being larger, more seats, as the auditorium being larger, more seats, the gymnasium being larger than what the state wants you to build. To me, this seems like this was an item that was missed in the design. I know you mentioned the bathrooms now that will be in the cafeteria. I hope they make adjustments possibly to make up for the lack of bathrooms in the, you know, gymnasium, because I have heard from several parents that it is a problem for the students there. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Again, just to clarify, Counselor Gishia, it was just a request for the manager to bring report, not a motion, if I'm correct? Okay, wonderful. Anything else? No other comments, report? Okay, that portion is now complete. We now will move on to the communication from City Manager, which are the motion responses. We'll start with motion response A, LTC Board of Health. Any comments, Counselor Musia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very good to see this most positive response in such a timely, quick fashion. Credit to the meeting members, Lisa Golden, Joanne Telly Keegan, and LTC for allowing this meeting to be either televised or broadcast at a later time. And having said that, if we could, if someone could please let us know the times and the dates when the meetings will be played back for the public so that they will know. Thank you very much, I'm very grateful. Never did I ever doubt that the Board of Health, the Health Department, did not want them televised. I would never have portrayed that message, but I'm glad that people will be able to see it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here, none. We'll now move on to the next motion response B, which is response to my motion on COVID-19 employee protocols and guideline, and I want to thank Ms. Golden for making this report. And it's a very, very short and right-to-the-point report. I'd just like to quickly, if you could explain to maybe some members of the employee, did not read the report, or for the public to know, if you could just reiterate briefly what you wrote to the City Council? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager, counselors. Nothing's really changed with the COVID guidelines out in the public, out with the city, with the employees. So it's basically, if you come down with COVID or test positive for COVID, you stay home for five days and then you mask for five days. Basically, in the state of Massachusetts, we have a great amount of people vaccinated, so we are seeing lower rates of people with COVID, but people still are getting COVID. So we're recommending stay home for five days and then mask for five days. The city does have a clinic on Tuesdays from four to seven at the Health Department if anybody wants to be vaccinated with boosters, and then at the Lowell General Saints Campus, Cataldo is still doing clinics on Thursdays and Saturdays, and they will vaccinate at all ages from six months to any age. I don't know the oldest they've done. So they do do quite a few shots up at that clinic, and they'll do all doses, first dose to all boosters. We do have COVID test kits available at the Health Department if anybody wants any home COVID test kits. We just got a shipment of 100 boxes on Friday, so I will share with anybody who wants them. And there's no masking. I know some people want a mask, if you want a mask, you can mask, but there's no masking needed at all. So we're kind of past this. We're out of the pandemic, going towards the endemic, so we're towards the end. Three years is enough for all of us. Any questions?
Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Lisa Golden, the Health Director. In your report, it says if symptoms are improving, you may end isolation on day six and wearing masks around others for 10 days. Is that, is the, on the 11th day, you're okay to take the mask off? So basically, on day five, you come out, so then you've got five more days of wearing it. So in total, it's 11 days from the beginning to the end?
Correct.
Okay.
And we don't know how to count in public health, so it's like...
I was just reading it as 16 days, and I'm like, whoa.
Yeah, yeah, we really don't know how to count, so you have to be a medical professional to figure this out. And people call me, and they're like, "What is she talking about?" So if you, like, if I decided to walk out of here and take a test, and I test positive, this is my day zero? And people are like, "What are you talking about?" Or if I'm symptomatic and I take a test, this is still my day zero? So then tomorrow is day one? So it's all messed up. People are like, "Okay, I'm just going to wear it for another day just to figure this out." So some people go longer. And then what does it mean if your symptoms get better? So like, if you don't have a cough, or if you're feeling better? My theory is, if you feel well enough to do your job.
So after day five, they just have to wear the mask for five days after that?
Right.
So, and on day six of wearing a mask, it comes off?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Just a quick question. Do we have enough test kits now that we could distribute them, like at the senior center in City Hall? Are we already doing that?
Yeah. So the senior center actually has, I think, 10 boxes. We did start last week giving some to the library, I think the library has 10 boxes. And what I mean by 10 boxes, I mean 10 boxes of 90. So the senior center has always had a good supply. The library has some, and John, I believe, is at the volunteer at the front desk, he actually has started, what is it? Joe, he started like shaking down people because somebody was kind of funny. They called me today and said, "I just left paying at the treasurer's office, and I left with test kits."
Good, thank you.
Counselor Scott? Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for FYI, I was able to get supplies, the test kit supply, from the Walgreen. The insurance paid for that, so people who has insurance can get, if they, if the Health Department don't have it, then they can get it from Walgreen through their health insurance. It's free. Thank you.
No other? Counselor Musia?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to our Lisa Golden here. I just want to update to see if I'm up to date. So let's go back to the beginning. So it's one flu shot, then the second flu shot, then it was a first booster shot...
COVID, wait, you did flu. You only did one flu shot a season.
I mean, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yep.
It was one first COVID shot, then the second COVID shot, then the first booster shot, and the second booster shot.
Yep.
And then, of course, the flu shot.
Yep.
But is there something I'm missing? Like, is there a third booster, or there's not?
Yep, so one bivalent booster since October.
There was one more?
Yeah, one bivalent booster.
Hmm.
But you can call me, I can check your record for you.
So I'm missing something?
Well, maybe, but maybe not.
Okay.
Yeah, but call me.
Thank you.
We'll check you out.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that motion response? Here, none. Thank you, Ms. Golden, for being here. We now go on to the next motion response C, COVID-19 wastewater surveillance. Any comments, Counselor Robinson?
No, thank you. I didn't, at the time the motion was filed, I was seeing where we were with this, because this was put in play a while ago, and I appreciate the report. Thank you.
No other comments or questions on that motion response? We now move on to motion D, response, Water Department gate-tuning program. Any comment, Counselor Scott or Counselor Rook? Who would like to go first?
No, thank you. It's an excellent report, I'm glad to see it starting to happen this summer. Thank you.
Counselor Rook is joining us on Zoom. Counselor Rook, you have any comments?
All set, thank you very much.
Good, thank you. We now move on to E, motion response on 131 Middlesex Street, Hart Park. Any comment, question, Counselor Noonan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the directors of, DPD, Assistant Directors of the managers of the Jawanis by Ross. The report is great, I'm glad that they got along. You get the new partners and soon to be completed, which is awesome. Thank you for the report.
Any other comments or questions? Here, now we move on to the next motion response F, Rook Bridge Construction Update. Any, who would like to go first? Counselor Noonan or Counselor Gishia?
I defer that to Counselor Gishia, and then I'll follow that.
Counselor Gishia? Okay, Counselor, who would like to go? No comment would be fine as well?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this is, it's been in a lot of, on a lot of resident, particularly the Highlands. This has been, this temporary bridge has been 40 years, rather too late, but I'm glad that it's started. And I thank then Dean of Delegation, now Manager Golden and the team, and particularly, I know Counselor Rook has been really good in terms of getting the Mass DOT to take a look at it and said, "We need to do something." I know that, you know, a lot of us know the history of what's, you know, when this bridge was temporarily put in there, and we also know how much it's going to cost us right now, which is $169 million. Simply, the, you know, I like the report, but then again, it's not really answers what I'm asking or what me and Counselor Gishia is asking, the timeline. I know that is beyond our control, really, in terms of the Mass DOT timeline, but we should be able to really get at least a synopsis of it, where is the design phase is starting, you know, how long it's going to take for the design place, oh, design phase to complete, and so on and so forth. And so here, all we know that it's starting 2024. I thought, I know Counselor Gishia as well, that this was supposed to start this year, 2023, and finish sometime 2028, and now got pushed. So the project, we know the beginning now, 2024, and the end date, 2030, but we don't know anything else. And you go onto the Mass DOT website, and even the report indicated that they don't have it there, they're in the process of updating. Let's get something so that people can take a look, particularly those residents who want to know where and when, when is going, the design phase is going to start and how long it takes, and how long, when we're going to really start building it. So please get a report from the Mass DOT. They may not care about it as much, but the resident of Lowell do care, particularly those who live in the Highlands who've been waiting for this bridge to be replaced for the year too late. Thank you.
Any comments, Counselor Gishia?
I would just follow the same comments as Counselor Noonan. It really didn't give us much depth to the timelines and stuff, and I think that that's what we're really questioning as we look at that bridge. I'm very concerned, because we asked for a third-party inspection on that bridge many, many months ago, and I'm just concerned, as I drive over it every day, you see another piece of metal up or something. So a timeline would have been great, but thank you for the report.
Through Mr. Manager to Ms. Altman, if you would like to make comment responses?
Yes, if I may. The Mass DOT's website is a little behind, and that's the information that they are publishing on the timeline. Since I wrote this report, they have put up a public informational meeting, will be on the 31st of this month at 2:00. It's a virtual working group, and I imagine that after that, excuse me, after that working group meeting, there'll be a better timeline. I don't have one more precise than what is shown on MassDOT's website, which is design is starting, and then they, because it's design build, they will do the permitting and start the design, and then they will hope to start construction in 2024 on little bits and pieces. And then it'll move through the process, so they'll build foundations and the new foundation place or whatever. I don't have anything more exact at this time, but hopefully after the working group meeting, there'll be some more information. So I can provide, I'll be on that meeting, so I'll be able to provide some more information after that. It is open to the public, so if anybody wants to register, you can be on that meeting as well.
Thank you. Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Altman. I read the report, and we were talking about, and it doesn't say much, and remind me of the Wendy commercials that say, "Where's the beef?" You know, that's what we want to know, what the deadline, the timeline. So my question to you, would it be possible if we can get someone from the Mass DOT or NIMCOG to come to the council meeting and kind of give us the detail, the beef that we're talking about? Please?
I could ask, and to have somebody come, or at least provide me with more information.
I just don't have that information right now, because I don't know that they know right yet. They're still in that design and working group process. So I can certainly ask for somebody to come or provide more information.
Thank you. Just like Counselor Noonan said, you know, to Mass DOT and NIMCOG may not be important, but for the resident of Lowell, we've been waiting for almost 40 years to get a new bridge, and every day, things falling apart, and then, you know, I drove through, always think about what's going to happen. So a lot of resident concern about the Rook Bridge, so for us, for the resident of Lowell, it is critical. So if we can maybe ask them to come and at least to show the concern and listen to what we have to say, it maybe help push along the process. Thank you.
They might, after, as the design progress, they, it's very likely that they will come to you with a presentation. So they do do that kind of public outreach. So I don't know if they're just going to tell me, you know, "We're going to get there, Liz, you know, eventually, we're going to have a presentation to, of a final design to the council." So I will get more information and provide it to you as much as I can get at this time.
You also, Counselor Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Altman.
Counselor Noonan?
The mayor, thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Altman? Thank you for being here. We now go to the next motion response G, which is the ARPA funding timeline update. Any comments or question, Counselor Robinson or Counselor Janess? Counselor Janess?
I'm happy to defer to Counselor Robinson if he wants to go first.
Who would like to go first? Counselor Robinson or Counselor Janess? Counselor Robinson?
Well, thank you very much. Again, this has been, a lot of people in the community have been waiting on this, and to see that, that tranche on the first rollout, I think is great. One of the things that I'd like to see, once this is fully rolled out, do we have some graphics or something that would be available to take from, to some of the small businesses and let them know some of the things that are going to be coming up and available with the ARPA rollout?
Before Mr. Flynn speaks, Counselor Janess, do you have something else to add, so Mr. Flynn can answer all at once?
Sure, just a couple other quick things. First, thank you for the report. As Counselor Robinson said, I'm very excited to see this moving forward and see this tranche, you know, be funded next month. I'm especially excited to see that we'll be doing outreach and providing funding applications in multiple languages. I think that's very important for our extremely diverse city, so I'm happy to see that. The only question I have is, when we did the informational sessions in the past, did we collect folks' contact information, and if so, are we planning to reach out to those folks and let them know, hey, we've moved along in the process and here we are? Whether that's an email blast, or however we were going to do it, I think that might be something worth considering. But on that, thank you very much for the report, and I look forward to see it moving forward.
Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council, to answer Counselor Janess's question, we do have the contact information for folks that both responded to the online survey, as well as folks that were at information sessions. So if they provided an email address, we have it, so we'd be able to reach back out to them and give them the information about the applications that are coming up. For like graphics, as far as we're talking about, and I guess maybe I need some more specifics about what it is that you'd like to see or present, because I want to make sure that whatever it is we give to the small businesses sort of addresses their needs, or if you have something in mind in particular, I would be happy to try to create that.
That'd be great, because like, for example, in Centerville, we have a ton of small businesses that potentially could be eligible based on what the qualifications are, and A, language is going to be a barrier if it's only in English, and I think visuals help, but as long as they're translated materials that are pretty clear and spell out opportunity to, if they have vision to expand on their business, facades, storefront location, signage, any of the things that probably will be rolled out and eligible, as long as we can go to the business in our district, provide them that image and documentation so they can understand that this opportunity exists, and this is the application process, you know? So any of that stuff would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
We can work on that.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. I think it's also important to notice that, note that this is the outward-facing information that we're putting out to the public, but Mr. Flynn's still working with wastewater, Lowell Fire Department, the chief is here, as well as all the school building stuff. So we are, ARPA is actually really moving, and it's moving at a pretty quick clip. So this stuff that we've been putting together, one of the difficulties in, I think, Mr. Flynn could answer, could talk to this, is just the fact of the guidelines and what has been happening in the reimbursements and the compliance issues and the requirements that are really set forth. As I was trying to speak to earlier, it's a lot easier for the city to spend money, and I'm the chief of the fire department's here, so I'm going to use him as the example, but it's a lot easier for us to look at it that way and spend it. It's going to be a little bit more of a challenge when we look out to the public, because we're going to have to ask the public to ensure that they do comply, they do hit all of the requirements that are necessary, and most, if not all, Mr. Flynn, is all of this is reimbursable. This is stuff that we have to reimburse to the entity that is coming forth. And the reason for that is to make sure that the city isn't left on the hook, I guess, if we were to give so, you know, a particular industry X amount of dollars and they end up not spending it the way they had stated. So this has been a process, this has been, obviously, a learning curve, and I believe that Mr. Flynn just received some new guidelines, which will be coming out, or coming out at the end of February. So there's a lot going on with ARPA, and I just want to commend Mr. Flynn, who I referred to, I think, as the one-man band earlier, I apologize, but with you and our finance team, we've been trying to keep this together. So any ideas that the council may have about how to get out to our neighbors and, you know, Bridge Street or whatever, those corridors, what do those ideas look like? Make sure that we, you can either share those with me or the assistants, or directly to Mr. Flynn. Thank you.
I'm open to anyone with any ideas, or if anyone has to talk through what it means, or I'm here, I'm here to help as much as I can.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through Mr. Manager, where do we stand right now with the dashboard creation as far as putting that information out to the public? And there's a lot of discussion around, you know, we have all this money, why haven't we spent it yet? You know, so I just want to make sure that it's outwardly posted right away so people can see it?
Yeah, we are still in the process of implementing that. The, we're hoping that we get to a point where we can have something through that website in another probably three or four weeks. In the interim, there's a report that has been posted to the city's website that, it's a simple graphic, and I have an example of one here, that shows how much money we've spent to date and the category that it's been spent in, as well as how much has been encumbered or promised, sort of like, you know, how much money has been committed through either a contract or a purchase order. So that information is on the website, it's static though, and I'll be updating that for the end of December, when I get to the end of this month, when I'm processing the report for the Treasury.
And as far as what Counselor Robinson was alluding to, putting projects up there, like bid opportunities, that type of, those will all be up there in three weeks?
We're hoping, I'll say I'm hoping. It all depends on how the timeline goes with getting it implemented, but yeah, as soon as we can do it, we will be, for sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Tringwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the City Manager. Mr. Manager, you had actually just addressed one of the topics I was hoping to ask about. I know that the report that we got does focus mainly on the pots of money that will be made available to outside organizations, nonprofits, because frankly, that's where a lot of the interest was in terms of the timelines and when those grants would become available. You did just mention, though, that there, you know, we have the whole infrastructure part of this, where, you know, the, currently looking at different, you know, projects internally, whether it's the, you know, the fire apparatus, which was pretty well laid out in the ARPA plan, in terms of, you know, which apparatus we're looking at and what years. But in terms of, you know, municipal buildings, water infrastructure, water and sewer, do we have an idea of, you know, when we may get information on, you know, specifically what projects will be funded, when those will... When those, when we may actually be breaking ground on, on some of those projects using ARPA funding? Not looking for like a very specific timeline here, but general timeline perhaps for when we, the council may be updated in terms of what projects will be receiving ARPA dollars in those categories?
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. Yes, Councilor, once we are spending those monies, they have been encumbered. For instance, I know that the council was welcomed to Engine One, the new Engine One. And we, you know, we will make sure that the council knows exactly how much we're spending. You know, wastewater is atop of my list. They are really working through that particular list with a whole bunch of ideas of how they're going to spend this money. So, there hasn't been any money spent there. However, on the school building side, if the commissioner, I asked the commissioner, he had something else to do, so he's not here. But what the commissioner would be able to rattle off exactly where we've been spending that money when it comes to HVAC concerns and heating and things of that nature. So, we are in, in full gear, full gear doing that with, with HVAC. And of course, the chief could speak to the work that he's been doing. Probably doesn't want to mention the companies he's been working with, but he has been working a lot with the, the different fire company apparatuses to see who is gonna give us the best deal. And once those, I guess, deals are made or those, those comment, those things come back to life, the council will definitely know that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And it's great to hear about all the, the work happening behind the scenes to identify the, you know, different projects and, you know, which ones, I'm sure many of them have been planned for a long time, but which ones will get prioritized using the ARPA dollar. So, at some point, I think it would be great for the council just to, to get an update on, on, you know, where we are in terms of those, those categories, certainly the wastewater, fire, as well as municipal buildings. That would be great. Thank you.
Council Mosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes I like to think out loud and what I say now is me thinking out loud. And I, I know that some of the section of money is gonna go to businesses that were impacted by COVID. And having said that, I want you to realize a building that was in disrepair and nothing was really happening there. And picture yourself if you were the person that, you know, gutted it all out and spent like a half a million dollars and then you put your heart and soul and life into the building to create a venue for people to come and utilize and be part of the downtown. And then COVID struck after you went through all that expense and you spent all that money. And now, because of COVID, your business is not flourishing. So, so I can appreciate the fact that we're taking some of that money and giving it to businesses who were impacted by COVID. But now, think a little better to not only getting the COVID and your business suffers, but then you create a roadway that you have to close down. And then on top of it, you still don't have the customers, even that COVID is gone to some degree. So, I would hope that when people in the city are looking at something like that, that they can give, and I'm not saying special treatment, but keep in mind the sacrifice and the challenge that that business went through to create something so beautiful and yet find head-on many obstacles. That's my thinking out loud. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council. Council, the Assistant City Manager will be speaking about some of the economic development opportunities that we're gonna have, you know, I think as well, that could help those restaurants that have, that are experiencing that with Mr. Flynn. I think this, we've been talking about this particular restaurant because of the hardship they're going through with that, with the Central Street Bridge. But that is something, I believe it's in an informational that we will be talking about soon.
Thank you.
Next is our Councilor Gishia.
Just a couple of months back, Council Janess had put in asking for quarterly reports on all the projects and the expenditures out of each of the ARPA money. Are we still gonna see those or is that something that?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. They are currently right now on the website. They're rather static, as Mr. Flynn had stated. And we're hoping by the end of February to have something that's gonna be real-time.
Okay, could, could we have that reported to us in our packet quarterly, like Council Janess asked for back then? If that's, if that's possible, just so that we can track them and keep on them rather than go to the website in addition to it?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
Mr. Manager?
Through you to the council. Yes, when we were saying quarterly in the package, I thought if we put it online, but we can put that quarterly in the package as well. That's totally fine.
Thank you.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a while back, through you, Mr. Mayor, through two managers, a while back, you provided us a report that with category as to spending. This is one of those, and the report tonight is on the social impact. And is that the amount still thirteen point four million dollars?
Mr. Manager?
Through you to the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Yes, the, the number is thirteen point four million dollars.
So, when the roll over in the plans began, indicated at February 2023, is that the beginning and is there an end date to it at all? In term of looking and open up for, you know, the application process and, you know?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council. This will all be accepted on what we'd call a rolling basis. So, some of the stuff that Mr. Flynn is gonna be putting forward, the, some people may be asking for a dollar figure to show over the next few years where the growth of that program is gonna be proven to Mr. Flynn and the team that this is seed money. What we're trying to get through the rolling basis is to make sure that this money is something that is going towards something that is attainable through, in, in years to come. That may or may not always happen, but that's the goal of what we're trying to accomplish here. So, if we were to give, and I'm giving an example, a hundred dollars on year one, maybe we'd give fifty on year two to, to kind of give that, that organization that jumpstart that is needed. What we're trying to avoid is a structural deficit for that organization. If the organization was given, say, a hundred dollars and a hundred dollars every year, and then on year three, we may not, we, we may have it through ARPA, but we may not have it on year three or year four through the city budget to give that money. So, that's been the goal, to make sure what is gonna be accepted, gonna be programming that can last in the, into the future, years four, five, six, seven, and eight. That's what we're gonna try to accomplish with the ARPA funds.
So, through, let's say, small businesses, so you're basically the first, the first year issue, you know, rolling this out, you give a hundred dollars, for example, like, like you said. And then you anticipated, you're waiting for them the year two to give you a report as to how they're doing and whether, how much you're gonna fund them. Is that how it works?
Yeah, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Flynn?
That, the idea would be that we would give, as the manager had mentioned, it'd be seed money of sorts. And then during the course of that year, the recipients required to provide us with reporting of what they're spending it on, to make sure that they're spending it in accordance to the rules of ARPA, along with what it is they said that we're gonna spend it on. And then year two, the, the hope would be, excuse me, the hope would be that we wouldn't have to, yeah, still sick. We would not have to give them another hundred dollars. We would give them something less because they have figured out a way to offset that additional revenue. So, it's to try to get them to jumpstart their business and then help them along the way so that they are self-sufficient by year three or at the end of year three. That's, that's the goal for some of those types of funding.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Councilor, just to get back to the last point, yes, that is true, but there are also gonna be grant opportunities. Let's say grant opportunities for beautification of one's business. If they were looking to do just simply, you know, painting, awnings, things of that, that nature. That would be simply a grant program that I believe Ms. Rosbayers is gonna talk about soon. So, there's two things going on, but on the growth of businesses, what we're really trying to accomplish is that seed money to get through years two, three, four, and five and so on into the future. But there will be grant opportunities for, you know, new lighting or new things of that nature. Hopefully, the best of both worlds, Councilor.
You all said, Councilor Noon? Council Robinson, did you have your hands up earlier that you want to add anything else? No? Okay, anyone else? Here none. Thank you, Mr. Flynn, for being here. And to Councilor Mosia's point, one of the sector that is really impacted by COVID are the small businesses. And one of the small business representatives from Sahel Restaurant is here in the chamber, listening to what's going on, eager for, for assistance as well. We now go to the next motion response, H, the last motion response of the night on trash enforcement violations and fines. Councilor Scott and Councilor Gishia, who would like to make comment? Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question around, I did already reach out a little bit about this, but the lack of being able to hire somebody for the open technician positions. I have had people reach out to me to tell me that they applied for the positions and did not receive a response. I think it's really urgent, looking at the spreadsheets, that we need these people out there every day doing this. We've had a lot of tickets done, December, November, October, one in September, two in August, one in July, you know, one in May, and then we had a gap of like six months where we had basically nothing in this report that we received. So, I would just stress the urgency of hiring these positions. Thank you.
I do. I have a few comments. I guess through you to Yvani Bai as the Assistant City Manager, DPD. Could you explain to us what Development Services' role is in this? And what, where it separates with the DPW? Because I think a lot of people are confused that, at the overlap that goes on. And I guess the question is, why would you, through the manager, if the manager wants to answer it, he can. But why would you have written this report and not DPW?
Through Mr. Manager to Ms. Rosbayers?
So, we included two kind of sets of reporting in the, in the, in the response. Those that were coded as DDS was everything that was issued, either a violation or a fine by Development Services. And then there were others that were coded as DPW. And those were all have come from solid waste and recycling. So, there are inspectors in Development Services, which falls under the Planning Department, that do go out and do violations for things like minimum maintenance if somebody has like an overflowing dumpster or trash on their property. So, those are things that we, we do issue tickets for that kind of fall under this trash enforcement situation. Things like we get complaints regarding, you know, people's properties being sort of unkempt or that sort of spilling out into the public way. So, those are all things that Development Services has the ability to, to issue violations for. So, we, we sort of combined efforts and I got data from, from DPW and, and combined it into one motion because both departments essentially have the ability regarding different things. DPW will do fines, for example, for when trash cans are overflowing or when people leave their barrels out for too long. Those are things that DPW folks can find for. But there, there is overlap in some of this sort of trash enforcement, I guess.
To me, it's a very hard report to read because it, it's all over the place. I don't know what percentage is written for people having trash on their property versus the trash that actually goes out to the sidewalk. So, that to me is the key piece that we're looking for. When you look at contamination of recyclables and stuff like that, it's usually when it hits the sidewalk. Because I had this issue with, with across the street from DPW where they just put whatever they want out and it is what it is. But what percentage of all of these written is DPW? And what percentage was your department, Development Services?
I don't know. So, the, the, the report was split between the, there's sort of the first half of them that had addresses and then the second ones that were, that showed a dollar amount with fines. They were grouped by whether they came from DDS or they came from DPW. That's sort of our effort to organize it and make it a little easier to read. But what the actual breakdown was, I, I'm not actually sure.
The other thing that's really confusing is the warning piece versus the actual fine piece. The warning piece gives us addresses. The fine piece gives us nothing. It just gives us a bill number. So, for, for us, that's very hard to understand, at least for me. I, I don't, I can't speak for the other ten councillors, but it's hard for me to understand. Okay, there's warnings here. Now, where did that warning go? Did it end up in as a fine? And then the other thing that's really, really concerning to me is the adjustments. How does somebody get an adjustment when they got fined? Obviously, we're fining somebody, but fourteen percent of the people you fined since 2020 have gotten adjustments. So, how did we waive people's? We obviously know what they did, so I, I don't know how you get out of it. And I don't know the addresses, so I don't know the particulars of, of the events. But how does somebody actually get an adjustment? Because they must have had a warning first, right?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. That would be, Councilor, that'd be through the appeals process. If somebody did appeal it and pushed back and forth, we did have, at one point in time, we had somebody that was doing those appeals and we're working on that to reappoint that. So, the appeals manager would have the ability, if somebody came in, to lower it, lower that fine.
Do, do you see the adjustment rate? So, since 2020 to today, because I only went to 2020 because I only asked for two years, the rest of it to me is, I, I'm not gonna spend my time just looking at things that weren't even numbered when we have Excel numbers next to them. Hundred and thirty fines were handed out from 2020 to 2022. Sixty-one of them were adjusted, were freebies. So, that's like, okay, yeah, yeah, okay, don't do it again. Well, you know, Councilor Scott and the rest of the council are here saying, look, you know what? I don't care if you got, if you got a warning and you continue to do it, that's when you get to the fine stage. It's not like we didn't give a warning first. And, and I don't care who they know. I don't care what they like. Put out your trash like the rest of us have to. Because when you contaminate it, it's in our bills. Because we not only pay for it to go to recycling, then we pay for it again to come back and go to the next one. So, we're double paying for the same thing because, and then we're given adjustments, which I'm sure there's an outskirts person who didn't deserve to get fined. And I, I'm sorry for that, that they went to your house twice. But when you read this report, it's just remarkable to me that we don't have the addresses, but we made adjustments. We have the addresses for the fines, I mean, for the violations. We didn't get them put in here. And it's a public record. People can get this information. And I just, I, I don't understand how we ended up in this position that we're giving away this kind of funds back and forth. My other question is on the hiring piece. When I looked at from 2020 to 2022, we saw that there was a hundred and thirty that went out that got fined or, or got written. But since October 26, 2022, when Councilor Scott filed the motion, we've had seventy-four warnings already. So, when we look in this and we're looking at lack of help, we see that somebody got busy after a councillor put in a motion. So, that's where the questions come in is, you know, are we actually doing our jobs? And are we getting people out? Or does it take a city council to come up, make a motion to get people out of their seats and out of their desks to go actually do something? Because when you start looking at all these numbers and you start reading, and I don't know if it, when you start looking through this, it gets to be repetitive. You start looking at it because nothing was numbered in here. How many were done? How many weren't done? What was done? So, you could do it easily. Now, you have to go and count and, and there may be a number off wherever it is. But it shouldn't have to take a city councillor to file motions and then call the DPW to have them come over and look at it. And even when you look out your window at DPW, there's trash overflowing over the barrels. It's just insane to me. And I think that we, we need to do a better job. And I thank Councilor Scott for pushing back on this. And I think that we can do a lot better in this area. Thank you.
I believe Ms. Rosbayers would like to respond?
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention that I did connect with the folks at Development Services today about our ability to pull the detail on the Munis reports. And so, we do have, for example, the ability, when you're logged into Munis, to And so we do have, for example, the ability, when you're logged into Munis, to see what exactly the violation was. But pulling the report does not automatically populate like the comment field. So it would be logged in, for example, as something that would be like a minimum maintenance. And then it kind of gets lumped in. And so you'd have to go into the address to have the detail about like which inspector did it, and, you know, if it was like overflowing trash, or something like that. So I recognize that the aggregate report from Munis is a bit difficult to follow. It's also my understanding that when somebody's put into the system, they get like a customer number, or like an assignment. And so it goes back again to that. And so that's why I think the second report didn't have the addresses, because they were able to tie it back based on the individual, once that file is sort of created on the backend of Munis. So some of that does, once printed, and not having the ability to get into all the Munis details in an aggregate report, is a little hard to follow, for sure.
You all said councillor Gishia?
I would suggest through you to the manager, that Moran be brought in to show them how you can populate to the Word, into the Microsoft, so you can populate it over, so it will include all that right in Munis. So it is done. So if you just go to Moran, I'm sure he can help them populate it through the Excel sheets.
Councillor Nun?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you, Mr Mayor, to managers, maybe assistant city managers, Yovani Baez as well. Thank you both, councillor, councillor Scott and councillor Gishia for filing these motions. I think, you know, we all know, for most, and all of us, especially the CFO, every year the city pays thousands and thousands of dollars for the contaminating recycle. And that's why we have people go there and try to inspect, make sure that people do what they're supposed to do. Lessons and, 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 and training, and, and, and corresponding being sent to just about every home, and how to do that. You know, so when you have people violate that, you know, you know, you need to, they need to be responsible for it. You know, you make sure that they hurt their pocket, basically. I understand it's COVID now, after COVID. This has even happened before COVID. So the report, the question, the motions by councillor Gishia was clear those, and asking for a list of written fine, you know, so, and, and, and how, how much was collected? And, 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 you know, and, and how much is being adjusted, or being waived after hearing? It's simple, and make it clear, and make it easier for us, because this here is about 30, over 30 something page, and we don't really know how much has been collected, in terms of dollar? And how much is being waived, and how much has had not been paid? And what are we going to do about it? So those are, those are the simple question. And honestly, it shouldn't take 30 pages to really not say anything at all. Thank you.
Councillor Mosia?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you to Yovani. In the paper, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but the paper that says the address, and the date, and compiled, or ticketed, or new, then you have over that it's their property. But what do they mean by manual? What's manual?
Through Mr Manager to Ms Hurospayas.
See, nobody has any idea, and I don't blame you, but where is the recycling coordinator or director? Do we not have one? Because it shouldn't be Yovani that's here. I'm sure she's not a recycling person. So I just asked her a question, she can't answer, and I want to know, what's the difference between if it's a property, or if it's manual? Is it just plain land, or, but you wouldn't have a recycling bucket if that were the case? What is manual? I don't know what that means. So we can't answer that. Now it says, there are, I'm looking at UNR. There are more UNRs compiled than anything else. What is UNR? Does, what does that mean? Does it mean unresponsive? Does it mean unresolved? What does it mean?
Shaun?
That's unresolved.
Okay, unresolved. Why, why is something unresolved? It means, it means what? We never figured out if we're going to fine them, or we don't have any answer to this? Like, what, why are they, why are we saying unresolved?
They may have issued a fine.
Well, if, then it should say fined.
Well, it, it must have been fined, and then they close it as unresolved. There's a way to close out the violation in Munis.
See, I don't understand any of that. That makes no sense to me. And I'm not trying to hurt anybody here, because it's clear to me that we need more help in the recycling department, specifically another inspector, like councillor Scott said, absolutely, we do. So if there's one person there, or two, that isn't enough. We're defeating our purpose. And having said that, it says, and I'm not saying it, but it says here, that the full-time position available within the division did not garner any applicants. But yet, it goes on to say, well, we've done this for years on the efforts of volunteers. We can't even get people, get a paying job, but yet we were looking for volunteers to go out and try to help us? I mean, are we really kidding here? I don't understand that. But anyway, so these are the things that I'm concerned about. And if you, through you, Mr Mayor, to Shaun, through the city manager, on February 7, the neighborhood subcommittee's having a recycling subcommittee. If you could have someone from recycling, I'm sure someone works there that can come and answer my questions, because I'm going to have the same questions for them. If we could have, I don't know if it's April Hertz, I don't know who else could be there, but I think Yovani does enough. I don't even want you there. I think you do too much, and I don't, I know you're not the coordinator, but I don't know who else could be there from recycling, but we need some sort of help here. I just, and you know what really bothers me? The list that says billed. I have the same concerns that councillor Gishia has. They're billed $300, so evidently they were fined. There was no adjustments, because they didn't bother to, you know, look to dispute it. But they didn't pay it. It's due. Now, if, if we fine them, and it's due, and we can't find who owns, what, who did this, then the landlord should be held accountable for putting someone in their property that doesn't pay their fines. I mean, you know, we got a system here, and with, we're ticketing someone, and they're not going to bother, it's like they're thumbing their nose at this administration, and I don't like it. Because if I have to pay, and I don't agree with it, I'm going to go for a hearing and try to fight it, and if I can't win, I'll pay it. But, I mean, that's what I'm saying, and that's how I feel. And it was quite a lengthy, lengthy thing. There's more unresponsive things than anything else, and I don't know why. And I know that one person or two can do it all. I'm not blaming anybody here. And we're not looking for volunteers, because you can't even pay anybody to take a job. But that's my opinion on this. Thank you.
Mr Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Through you to the council. Councillor, thank you so much for that. Yes, they do time themselves through where people do not pay them. But there is a timeframe, which we can get that for you, where that, that fine will go in as a lien onto their property. So once they're unresponsive for a length of time, and I don't have that exact timeframe, they do sit here for quite some time, and, you know, our accounts receivables. And then at some, then at some point, they're flipped over into a lien process against the property, similar to, say, a water lien, or a tax lien, or anything else that we're doing. So, and it just actually goes right onto the tax bill itself.
Thank you.
But you are correct. They do sit around for, for quite some time.
And there's no, we're talking about revenue for the city? There it is! We need, it takes people to make money to get money. We got to spend some money to get some money. That's my philosophy. And so I can't fault two people that are doing the job of like 10 people. That's true, too. Thank you.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. I have a quick question. If, if, so currently, those two positions are vacant for waste and recycling? Still?
Mr Manager?
Only one?
Mr Manager?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you to the council. We have one person that has accepted the job, but is going through the process of leaving the other job. And they'll be starting soon. And the other, the other job is not filled at this time.
Okay.
We do have, we've become, quite honestly, councillor, very flexible. Sometimes folks don't want to leave where they are, but they want to come here, and they'll sometimes want to give the traditional two weeks, sometimes turns into, quite frankly, we've seen the traditional four weeks, where people are trying to give their former employer more money. And quite frankly, in some positions, you know, you have to say, that's a, that's a really nice thing. You'd want them to treat the city of Lowell the same way. So we have given a lot of latitude on starting, starting times.
Thank you. And do you know ballpark how many employees we have that operate out of waste and recycling? Because I remember having a conversation very recently, and I was told that we're doing repairs to bins and house, and all kinds of other things. But then on a report like this, it's saying we need volunteers just to even go out and do enforcement. So something's not adding up to me. If we have time to be fixing bins, who's doing the enforcement, and vice versa?
Mr Manager?
Through you, Mr Mayor, to the, to the council. Overall, right now, there's three, with the fourth to join, which will, oh, three total, I apologize, three totally budgeted, two, three total budgeted positions. And with the new person coming on, there'll be three. That's, that's what we're looking at here, sir.
Okay. And are there plans in the near future? Is that something the administration has kicked around? Because again, I mean, I've, I've had this discussion in the past with parking enforcement. I mean, these are positions that generate revenue potentially for the city, and it kind of offsets any salary that we're offering. So I don't understand why we're struggling to have people that can just go out and do enforcement, repair the bins, whatever else needs to be, out of the waste and recycling. Because as we're all aware, we've been an uphill battle with, with waste and recycling as long as I've been sitting in this seat, and long before. So I think any, any efforts we can put towards, you know, the enforcement component, because we all, as councillors, I'm sure, get bombarded with, especially in the winter months, in near schools, and routes where the children are walking. Recycling bins, trash bins, sitting out four days after pickup, like, and that's not to mention any of the fines that were occurring. Again, as councillor Gishia mentioned, it's not really a clear report. So I think that might be somewhere to take a look, and see how can we improve the operations? Whether it be pulling help from areas that might have a slower time right now? I don't know. But, but there has to be some kind of compromise made to find out how we can be more effective in the waste and recycling department. Thank you.
Councillor Gishia?
Through you to the manager. Mr Manager, while we're down employees, we have to find ways of getting these resources done. Have we offered employees overtime to do these jobs? I know we hired someone in the finance side of DPW that knows this job extremely well. If we had an employee who, the original salary was 40 hours a week, if we put 20 hours in overtime, that would be 30 hours of regular pay to that same employee. So we'd still be saving money, but we still would have some function to cover these needed services. We'd have to transfer, obviously, line items and stuff like that. But at the end of the day, shouldn't we be offering people overtime? It doesn't have to be the employee in the finance department, it could be just the guy who's driving the truck during the winter storms, or another employee that we can train readily fast, who could pick up on this, that we could offer the overtime to, and get them out there to do some of this stuff. And I'm sure in Development Services, we could switch some of those people out if we offered them overtime, that they would come and go and do some of these services. They know where the line is, where they can do the DPW side or their side. But in my line of work, we can't let a toilet overflow and just say, hey, look, you know what? We don't have anybody to clean it up. We have to figure out ways of getting this stuff done. And this trash component is something that, we have rats in neighborhoods, we have all kinds of issues going on, but we keep saying we don't have the staff. But we do have the staff, if we offer them overtime, to come in and do the job. We may not have the staff to fully cover those hours, but there's still somebody who could do this job. If we could look into those things, and try to get these things done, I think it would improve the quality of life for a lot of people.
Mr Manager?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The council, that's, yeah, we will start offering some overtime to different people in, in different departments. You know, the ordinance employees get a little, you can't offer overtime to them. However, I do think it's, it's possibly a good idea if we have folks that are looking for that overtime. We are experiencing, once again, here we go again, we had a great opportunity with plenty of folks applying for different jobs, but we're back, for whatever reason, I wish I could answer, we're back in that lull again, where we're just, we're not getting as many applicants for jobs. And I, I wish I could tell you why. HR department has been working with Mass Hire. As far as I can see, our information is everywhere it needs to be, we're just not attracting it. But I, I had a meeting, per request of the council, and it was in regards to a homeless piece, with some of the surrounding town managers, and they're having some of the same exact challenges. People just aren't signing up to, to, to apply. So we want to push everybody, that if they're interested in a job, we still have plenty here in the city of Lowell. And I'm sure that it'll dip back up as the way it has in the past.
If, maybe we can even offer it to the clerks in the building here, who never get overtime. And maybe they would be able to do this type, and Assistant City Manager Machado would know that better than anybody. And some of these people, their gas bills, their electric-
We're not going to give him any overtime, councillor.
I was thinking about just sending him out, because it would be free.
He said he only works 35 hours a week, councillor, so that's, that's it. He's tapping out. No, but that's a councillor, I apologize, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, through you to the council. That is an idea that we could possibly ask around, to see if people are interested in, in learning a different, a different trade.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Here none, that was the last motion response of the night. We now move on to section 5.2, on informational reports from the manager. The first one is the informational report on ARPA Economic Development Initiatives. Mr Manager?
Mr Mayor, through you to the council. If I could have Ms Carter speak to this motion? Thank you, Ms Carter.
Ms Carter?
Thank you, everyone. I'm, it's my first time here. I'm Ally Carter. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. So we have put together, based on the recommendations of this council, some, a grant, two grant programs, and two other programs for economic development through ARPA funds. One is a storefront improvement program with $500,000, that I believe was alluded to before, but to make improvements that are geared toward not just sign and facade, but also for historic preservation, in a historic district in particular, and for accessibility improvements. So it's a tiered matching program. The second one is small business grants, direct assistance to small businesses that were in disproportionately impacted industries. To make them, this is a little bit different from the CARES Act support, where that was sort of emergency sustaining rent and bill type grants. These are more about resilience. It's called the Economic Resilience Plan, Grant Program. So that's a bit more about, you had to pivot during the pandemic, you had to make adjustments to your operations. How can we make those adjustments permanent? How can we make you more resilient to meet future challenges? And then we have a technical assistance piece, with workshops and one-on-one assistance, and then also an initiative to help make retail kind of incubator program through a pop-up in the city. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councillor Robinson? Thank you. One question I have about all of this ARPA and economic development, and, and, does the QCT zones impact this in any way, shape, or form?
Through Mr Manager to Mr Flynn?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you to the council. For some of these programs, yes, we would like to, you'd want to focus it on QCTs, because those were by far the most dis- disproportionately impacted. So, businesses within those districts would definitely be sort of, would get, I don't want to say preferential, but they would definitely get more visibility, for sure.
And is the process the same for a business located in a QCT versus one that's outside of the QCT zone?
I would expect the process to be the same, yes. We'd want to keep it at least fair that way, for sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Robinson saw said. Any other comments or questions on this information report? Hearing none. Thank you both for making a presentation. We now, is there another person? Councillor Janess.
Sorry, just a quick thing. I just wanted to say thank you both very much for this presentation, this report. I know a lot of the small business owners in and around the downtown are excited by this. I think there's some excellent opportunities here, and I look forward to seeing this roll out. So, thank you.
No other comments or questions? We'll now go to the next informational report on water infrastructure project loan forgiveness. Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through to the council. This is a very exciting opportunity that we have here today. A couple of things I want to point out to you that are in the memorandum here, is the fact that the Mass Clean Water Trust Fund, we're allowed to borrow this off at 1.5%. And the good part about that is the savings of approximately $3 million overall. But the real, actually, big news tonight is, I want to say thank you very much to the CFO and the Assistant CFO, the, the Executive Director, Steve DeShane, as well as our delegation for all the support, our state delegation for all of, all of the support. Because what had ended up happening is, we qualified for a total subsidy, and that total subsidy, as you can see in line three, is to the tune of about, to the tune of $1.5 million. So, this is great news for not only our city, but I think it's a good opportunity to, you know, to give a shout out to the CFO, Steve DeShane, the Executive Director, who has really picked up and done a fabulous job after taking, taking over from Mr. Young, and our, our, our delegation for keeping us informed of these things. So, today is a, it's, it's a very good day, and the savings is going to be tremendous here for the residents of Lowell. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Councillor Getchea.
I want to also thank the manager and his team for getting this put together and rapidly getting these funds, because this is a direct savings to the taxpayer. It, it's a lot of money. Redundant water mains are, are some of the most important pieces of infrastructure that the city needs. And with that, and, and we're going to get that when the Rook Bridge comes in also. So, those are important infrastructure pieces. I commend your team for, for applying, and then the amounts are amazing. And, and thank goodness we have all this ARPA money to offset some of these bills, because this was a bill that was coming one way or the other. So, I, I thank you for your diligence in this matter.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. That completes the communication from the city manager. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Councillor Rourke, second by Councillor Yem, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to the next, one more communication from the city manager. Request out of state travel, one, excuse me, one LFD. Any comments or questions from any of the councillors? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt by Councillor Mercia, second by Councillor Getchea. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch Al.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy.
Yes.
Councillor Mercia.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yem.
Yes.
Ten years.
We now go to item number six on the agenda. Vote from the city manager. Will start with 6.1. Vote, accept, expend $12,797 fire safe grant, waifu reading and second reading by title. City of Lowell and the city council vote authorizing the city manager acting through fire department to accept and expend grant in the total amount of $12,797 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fire Services fiscal year 2023, the SAFE, S-A-F-E, grant award. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt by Councillor Scott, second by Councillor Drinkwater. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch Al.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy.
Yes.
Councillor Mercia.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson.
Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yem.
Yes.
Ten years.
The next vote is item 6.2, to accept and expend $15,000 cultural district grant case, waifu reading and second reading by title. City floor and the city council vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the city floor to accept and expand a cultural district grant in the total amount of $15,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts via the Massachusetts Cultural Council, MCC. Any comments or questions by the council? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt by Councillor Janess, second by Councillor Leahy. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch Al.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy.
Yes.
Councillor Mercia.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson. Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yem.
Yes.
Ten years.
The next item is number seven. Orders from the city manager, 7.1. Order 60-day trial, waifu reading and second reading by title. City floor and the city council order pursuant to chapter 266 of the Code of Ordinances, City Floor, Massachusetts, concerning section 266 dash 6, thereof entitled temporary experimental regulations. Temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for a period up to 60 days. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Hearing none. Need a motion to adopt by Councillor Janess, second by Councillor Noon. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mitch Al.
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councillor Getchea.
Yes.
Councillor Janess.
Yes.
Councillor Leahy.
Yes.
Councillor Mercia.
Yes.
Councillor Noon.
Yes.
Councillor Robinson. Councillor Rourke.
Yes.
Councillor Scott.
Yes.
Councillor Yem. Ten years.
The next item is number eight, reports of subcommittee. Mr. Clerk, do you have any subcommittee meeting report?
We don't.
We do not. We now move on to item number nine, petitions. 9.1 are claims to property damage. Any comments or questions by the councillors? Hearing none. Motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation by Councillor Drinkwater, second by Councillor Scott, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. Item 9.2 is the miscellaneous pharmacist's ward request installation of handicap parking sign at 1 West Burnside Avenue. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Hearing none. Motion to refer to traffic engineer for report and recommendation by Councillor Yem, second by Councillor Leahy, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. 9.3 is a miscellaneous also. Isidoro Maltonado requests installation of handicap parking sign at 7 Hanover Street. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Hearing none. Motion to refer to traffic engineer for report and recommendation by Councillor Mercia, second by Councillor Getchea, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to section 9.4. Verizon New England Inc. placed one new four-inch conduit approximately 46 feet southwesterly direction from existing pole Lakeview Avenue. Any comments or questions by any of the councillors? Hearing none. Need a motion to refer to public hearing on January 31, 2023 at 7:00 PM by Councillor Leahy, second by Councillor Janess, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is passed. We now go to the front section. City council motions. We'll start with 10.1. Councillor Leahy requests city council dedicate the corner of Westford, Oscar Street in remembrance of Jeff Roy Brothers, second by Councillor Noon, Councillor Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to put this motion forward and send it to the Monument Committee for consideration. Jeff Roy Brothers, Jimmy, Ricky, and Joey, they ran the Jeff Roy's garage up there for a number of years. I'll have more to say specifically when the motion comes back. But, you know, they were just, they exemplified what a neighborhood business should be. They helped out as many people as they could. They supported as many events as they could. If you had an issue with your car, and, and they fixed it, they would drop it off at your house. I mean, they were there for the people in the neighborhood and in the city of Lowell. And it'd be a great honor to have this tribute for them and their family. So, I'd like to put the motion forward to, send it forward to the Monument Committee. Thank you.
Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A great acknowledgement by Councillor Leahy. When I first came to Lowell, I remember the Jeffrey's Garage there, where K Pharmacies is at. So, to have that corner be named after the two brothers, the Jeffrey Brothers, is, is a good fitting to do that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. We now go to motion 10.2 by Councillor Getchea. Request the city manager update the council on the restoration of the restroom in City Hall, second by Councillor Janess. Councillor Getchea.
Motion speaks for itself.
Way to go, councillor. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is passed. We now go to motion 10.3 by Councillor Janess. Request city manager have proper department investigate current traffic control measures between the new roadway in front of the HCID garage and the Canal Place three parking lot, and look for safety and usability improvements, second by Councillor Scott. I understand there's a registered speaker on this one. Councillor Janess, would you like the speaker to go first?
Yes, please.
Mr. Clerk.
Daniel Monroe, Monroe.
He's not on Zoom?
No.
He left. Okay. Councillor Janess, we do not have a speaker anymore.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this has come up a few times in my discussion with neighbors. It also came up at the ZBA meeting last Monday. Basically, what's happened is, since the garage was built, that cut-through was closed off. But people are still using it as a cut-through. Mr. Manager, you and I talked, and there's a lovely new boulder in, in one place that's stopped one avenue, but folks are finding other ways. Just the other day, I was out walking the dog, and I saw someone come up onto the brick sidewalk, maneuver around the flagpole, and then around the, there's some crowd control grates and some granite blocks, and just kind of weave their way through to get to the parking lot. And it's extremely unsafe. Some folks who live in Canal Place 3 have told me that this happens multiple times a day. Folks have almost been hit walking on sidewalks. No one's expecting cars to come that way. I know we need to maintain that access for the fire department, but I don't know if there's a way, maybe we can put some bollards in or something to kind of calm that down, or change it entirely and open that access back up again. I feel like, right now, we're in this no man's land, where it's just bad either way. So, there has to be a better way to go about it. I don't know what that is. Leave that up to the experts. But I do think it's time to get some eyeballs on it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any of the council? Hearing none, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. The motion is adopted. We now go to motion number 10.4, also by Councillor Janess. Request city manager have proper department investigate ways to make the crosswalk across Central Street at the Warren Street intersection safer and more usable, second by Councillor Mercia. Councillor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Since the bridge has reopened on Central Street, and the signals are now gone, the temporary signals that were at the end of Warren Street on Central Street, that crosswalk there is now, A, used a lot more, since you can't cross on the western side of the bridge now. Folks are going back and forth. And it's, it's kind of tough to see folks, if you're coming southbound on Central Street, over the bridge, and then through that crosswalk. If somebody's crossing that crosswalk, it can be tough to see them. And I think that we need to have a look at the, the visual lines there, and try to make that a little better, maybe add a temporary flashing beacon, so people are aware there's a crosswalk there. Both that one, and honestly, the, the one at Heard Street as well, suffers from, from similar issues. Particularly at night, the lighting down there is, is not great. So, anything we can do to make that safer, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by any of the council? Hearing none. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. Do we have any idea, I know we've discussed it many times, when it comes to the traffic calming measures, any idea on those illuminated signage that we discussed in the past, that, the LED stuff? Do you know, is that something we've been looking into yet?
Mr. Manager.
I apologize, council. I don't have that information in front of me, and I will, I'll get back to you. But I know that traffic was looking at that, and, so I will get that back to you. I'm, I'm not sure on the cost, and I'm not sure on when, if she, if, if that indeed has been ordered.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing no hands, on favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. The motion is adopted. The next motion is item 10.5. Councillor Janess, request city manager have proper department study traffic pens and flows at the Market Central Prescott Intersection, and identify potential improvements to traffic signal cycle for the remainder of the Central Street Bridge project, second by Councillor Drinkwater. I just see you have some fascinating Councillor Leahy. Still second by Councillor Drinkwater there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. This was actually brought to me by one of the downtown business owners, who noticed that since the bridge has reopened, there are two new signs on Central Street when you're traveling north, which say you can't turn left on the market. One of them is directly above the sign that says the Roy Garage, Left Turn. So, it's really confusing. And people are making that left all the time. I admit, I've made that left five or six times since the bridge reopened, because I didn't see the signs until someone told me them, that they were there. So, I think we need to relook at this and decide if we really want to be keeping people from turning left on the market, which I don't necessarily think we do. But if we are, then we need to, we need to change that signage, because it's, it's not sufficient. And I don't want to see an accident, because somebody expects someone to do something that they don't do. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councillor Janess, for filing this motion. It's, it's ridiculous, really. I mean, before the two-way, now, we have, before that, we have one way, and you can turn left to go to the Roy Garage, and to go to all this establishment. And now, you can't turn left. So, for those who want to go to all this establishment, say, Brew Awakening and whatnot down that street, you have to go straight all the way to Merrimack and, or, or Middle, and then turn around. That's just ridiculous. So, I, I think, put it back to where it was before, so that it does not, those businesses does not need to have any more impact on them and, and their businesses.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, on favor of the eye. The motion is adopted. We now go to the next motion, item 10.6. Councillor Janess, Councillor Drinkwater, with motion to request city manager have proper department explore potential for targeted mixed-use development on one or more remaining city-owned parcels with the HCID and report. Who would like to go first? Councillor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I know we've talked about commercial development inside the HCID for a long time. Saw a report recently that there's about 500 million square feet of unused commercial space in the country post-pandemic. And I'm not suggesting that we jettison the commercial idea entirely in the district. But I think if we can look to possibly develop one or maybe two parcels as mixed-use development, you know, commercial on the first floor and residential above, there's a potential here to, to try to jumpstart the development of the rest of the district. And it does a few things. It addresses, it would address the, the housing crunch. It's not going to fix it, obviously, but every little bit helps. And it's also going to affect, or have a positive impact, hopefully, on the, on the revenues in the HCID garage. If we can build something that has 50 residence, residences, you know, that's, you know, who knows, 75 cars in the HCID garage, everybody paying a monthly fee, I think that'll help alleviate some of those concerns as well. I know that there are some interested parties in, in one particular parcel. So, I, I don't know if that's something that we can take a look at and see whether or not we want to, we want to look at going down this path. It's just something I wanted to, to bring forward and have a discussion on, and thank you.
Councillor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to, to echo a lot of what my colleague just said, you know, I think if you- I think if you look at a lot of the, the developments that have been successful recently in cities, it's really a mix of, of different uses, and, and that could certainly include commercial, you know, bringing in needed jobs. It would certainly be an important component of future development. But I think when you also look at, you know, some residential and, and having the residents there 24/7 to continue to, you know, to patronize businesses as well as some sort of, you know, dining, entertainment, or, or cultural component, really just kind of creating a little mini neighborhood where, you know, if it's, if it's all commercial, oftentimes you have, you know, nobody there after, after 5:00 PM. But at the same time, you don't want to turn away potential, potential jobs. So I'm sure there's conversations happening. I know not all of those conversations can happen here in the, in the public realm, is they involve, you know, potential conversations and negotiations with developers, and I'm sure a lot of this is being discussed and, and considered. But I thought this was a, a great motion that Counselor Janess brought up is, you know, if we can kind of look at what's been successful in other, other cities, other urban areas, you know, it really is that sort of 20, 24/7 type of, type of area where, you know, you don't close down, you know, in the evening, and you, you have some sort of presence there all the time, and, and something, you know, whether it's dining or some other form of entertainment that can bring in people from, from other areas, I just think would be a really great use for this very valuable asset for the city. So appreciate this, Counselor Janess, bringing this up. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. I think it's a great idea. You drive through downtown Haverhill, even Lawrence, and, and it seems like that format's working. Retail first floor, residential upstairs, and, and, I mean, Haverhill is, is amazing right now. Their downtown business district has reinvented itself, and I think it's a lot through the process just laid out by my colleagues. Residential and retail mix, mixed use, it's, it goes a lot further than sitting empty and, and hoping for big business to come in. So I think it might be time to take a look at a different model. Thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the City Manager. One thing I forgot to mention would be, was that it'd be great if this proposed development, if it is something we can do, if it can include potentials for, you know, like I said, mixed use but also mixed income, potentially look at, look at affordable home ownership opportunities built into this kind of project. You know, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of good we can do here, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. On favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is adopted. We now go to item 10.7. Counselor Scott request City Manager have proper department increase enforcement efforts around the trash and recycling barrels continuously blocking sidewalks.
Second.
Second by Counselor Leahy. Good job. Counselor Scott?
So much excitement over my motion. So I don't want to rehash the whole discussion earlier this evening about trash. This was actually part of my motion that I had made on October 11th, asking about the sidewalks being blocked as well. It really didn't get answered in the response earlier. But some residents reached out to me at the South Lowell Neighborhood Meeting, Sacred Heart Meeting. They're elderly. They said that the sidewalks are very difficult to navigate for them, and they're pretty able, you know, on their feet. And they were saying how this isn't fair to people that are disabled, wheelchairs, walkers, whatever. And, and there is a senior center right on Lawrence Street, which is a big part of the one that they complain about. I don't know if we could offer smaller barrels, if the barrels are too big for people to move, you know, possibly offer them the senior barrels, if that's an option. Also, another big complaint, some residents from South Lowell and back Central reached out to me, about apartment owners, larger units, four to eight-unit buildings, that just leave their barrels on the curb as their trash receptacle location. They never pull them back and forth, you know, the property owners. So if we could definitely see more fining and enforcement around that, I mean, they have to either have their tenants do it, or they have to hire somebody to bring the barrels back and forth because blocking it for the elderly and disabled just isn't a fair way to do it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. On favor, say aye. The motion is adopted. The last motion of the night is a motion by myself. If there's no objection, I'd like to read my motion from up here and make a short comment. Item 10.8, request City Manager have proper department review and investigate other permanent traffic calming measures to replace the current construction barrels and delineating tubes located on the intersection of Power Street and Parker Street, second by Counselor Leahy again. Thank you, Counselor. And just briefly, these construction barrels are usually temporary during construction phase, but ever since I remember, these construction barrels and the delineating tubes have been up there on Parker Street for the longest time, and actually now it's becoming, it has become a danger to that area where they've been hit by other vehicles. The tubes are falling to sideways. The barrels are being damaged, and it's not really a safe environment. Neither's a good look for the business district and area. There's a few residential properties around that area as well. So it'd be great if the administration of the city can take a look at that and make that look to a beautiful place. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. When those got put up, there were issues with school bus stops. People were taking the wrong, I think they were turning left when you're supposed to turn right or whatever. So it was a safety issue. And I forget who was the commissioner at the time. Instead of barrels, we put the, whatever you call them, pylons or things up.
You lived in.
So you lived there. If we replaced those, would that be a suitable solution again? We didn't want anything cemented that people would drive over if it snows and you don't see it, but maybe it's just time to replace whatever you call the plastic pieces because you still want access for fire trucks, but you just want to stop people from turning left and endangering the bus stop. So that would just be one suggestion. You, but again, it's your district, so take a look at it and see what you think, if that would be suitable again. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. On favor of the eye, opposed, no, the eyes have it. Motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the executive session. Before we take a vote on that, because we're going to go into the executive session and adjourn from there, but there is, if anyone wants to make an announcement right now, we can take this brief moment to make an announcement. If any of the council has any announcement to make, then the announcement, councilors. Hearing none. We're now going to take a vote on the executive session, and as I mentioned before, we're going to take a brief recess. We're going to go to the executive session. We will adjourn the meeting from the executive session, so we will not be returning to, to the chamber. For the executive session, it's item 11.1, the executive session to consider and discuss ongoing negotiations relative to the former Lowell District Court Building and Hamilton Canal District pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21.6, for the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, public discussion of which may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the city, and further to discuss matters of ongoing litigation, a state of Eddie K. Gayen versus City of Lowell, public discussion of which may have detrimental effect on the city's position. Any comments or questions by any of the councilor? Hearing none. Need a motion to go into executive session by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Yem. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Gishia.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Eleven yeas.
Again, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll go to executive session, and we'll adjourn from there. Thank you, and have a good night, everyone.